You can have more, but you just have to pay. It's going to be 1650 a cubic yard. And that's length times width times height divided by 27 is one cubic yard.
Any questions, of course. Let us know. Give us a call, 941-240-8050.
I'm Stacy Losio. I'm the emergency manager for the city of Northport. And I'm going to discuss first responders after the storm. So it may take a while for first responders to get to after the storm. And that's due to a variety of reasons. One being we pull first responders off the roads when tropical storm force winds are sustained for their safety. That is a standard usually across the state and other states that have hurricanes as well. So we will have a backlog of calls that have come in during the storm that we will prioritize based on urgency. And they'll be responding to those as well as the calls that are currently coming in if they're urgent and slow. Also, the roads might be flooded. There might be debris in the roads. Our tactical first in teams will be going out right away to clear the roads of any hazards so that our vehicles can get through and respond as quickly as possible. Just keep that in mind when you call after a disaster for assistance. We are coming. You are very important to us. We care about our residents and their safety, but it may just take a while for us to get to you depending on the conditions of the roads. I'm Stacy Losio. I'm the emergency manager for the city of Northport. And today we're going to discuss storm surge and flooding and how both of those affect Northport during a hurricane. So storm surge is when strong sustained winds are constantly blowing over a long period of time over the Gulf and pushing water up onto shore. So when that happens, there is a lot of flooding, a lot in beach erosion along the beaches and the homes inland. However, the storm surge can also push water up the river. So it could push storm surge up the Myacker River, for instance, from the Gulf. And then the water coming downstream from the river has nowhere to go. So that can cause water to back up along the rivers and cause flooding. That, along with a lot of rain that comes from these hurricanes, can also cause an increase of water flooding into the rivers and into our water management systems, causing flooding as well. Public Works does a lot of work before the storm to make sure that our water levels are as low as possible so we can handle additional storm surge and flooding in our water systems. If you want additional information about that, we have a great video about our water control structures and you can use it at the Public Works button.
Hello, everyone. My name is Devon Pulis. I'm the aquatics manager within our Parks and Recreation Department. We're here today at the Northport Aquatic Center just to talk to everyone about our Float for Life program. We recognize that nationally unintentional drowning is the leading cause of death for children that are under the age of four. So we have an awesome program here called Float for Life. Float for Life is a program that we teach that starts with the fundamentals of floating before we actually learn swimming. This program is targeted for those children at ages six months to four. And what we want them to do is we want them to get comfortable in the water. And if they accidentally fall in the water or find themselves in a trouble situation, they can roll over their back and float. When we launched this program, we were the only one in the state that was actually teaching this milestone program. So we want to give a shout out to our Northport Rotary as well, who sponsored this program here at the aquatic center and actually paid for a trainer to come in all the way from Nebraska where this program originates there. We practice and we go through what's called milestones here. So as soon as the kids progress through the milestones, we can continue moving on through them. And at the end of it, it's a pretty awesome program when they graduate. It's one of the final things that they do is they jump in fully clothed and they have to turn over, roll over on their back, and actually be able to scream for help at that point in time. It's just an awesome segment program that leads right into our Learn to Swim program. So that way, we can make sure we're keeping our kids safe in, on, and around the water.
Frank Lamas, Solid Waste Manager. I am here today with Mario Venditti. Mario, tell people here how long you've been doing this job?
I've been here five years.
Five years. Excellent. Excellent. So Mario, tell people what it entails, what you do.
I'm a planner scheduler for Solid Waste of the city. And I go around and I greet the new residents and I educate them on recycle.
Excellent. Sounds interesting. Very good.
Yep.
So Mario, what do you find inside the recycling bins that shouldn't be there? So let's try to tell the people how to recycle right.
The most common thing I find, Frank, is plastic bags.
Okay.
So the plastic bags are not recyclable. I find them just tossed in the container or they bagged to recycle with them.
Right. This is inside the blue lead containers.
That's right. Inside the blue lead containers.
Correct.
And they should be either taken back to the grocery store or tossed in the trash.
Very good. Do you see a lot of recycling inside the containers?
I do. Yes. I come across a lot of that.
Okay. We don't want to do that. So, okay. So if you have any questions, you can always look at our website, www.northportflorida.gov/solidwaste.
I'm Stacy Losio. I'm the emergency management coordinator for the city of Northport. And we're going to talk about why it's important to have a go-kit and what should go inside of it. It's important to have a go-bag because if you wait last minute to pack, there are definitely going to be items that you are going to forget in the scramble to get everything put together. So it's important to have your documents such as IDs, insurance paperwork, titles for your home and your vehicles and your boats, just so that if your home does flood or your roof blows off, all those documents are with you and they're safe because you don't want to end up losing those and having to try to replace those later on. Also, in your go-bag, you should think about what medications you might need to have ahead of time if we're under-
Here we are after our holiday hiatus. Today is Thursday, January 4th, 2024. It is 2:30 PM. We are in the city chambers and I call the city commission special meeting to order. Commissioners present are Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner Langdon, myself, Mayor White, Vice Mayor Stokes, and Commissioner Emmerich. We do have a quorum. Also present are City Manager Fletcher, City Attorney Slaton, City Clerk Faust, and Police Chief Garrison and Fire Chief Titus. The chiefs are in the house. Pledge of allegiance. I will call on Joan Morgan to lead us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So.
Second.
Right. I have a motion to approve the agenda made by Commissioner Langdon and seconded by Commissioner Emmerich. Let's vote. And that passes 5-2-0. City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to 23-1582, discussion and possible action regarding input and feedback from former historic and cultural advisory board members on current duties outlined and accepting applications at a future date. City Clerk, this is your item.
Yes. On September 12th, 2023, commission directed to draft a resolution continuing the temporary suspension of the Historic and Cultural Advisory Board due to lack of board member participation. We also, there was a motion to direct the city clerk to create an agenda item for discussion with possible action from former advisory board members to go over and discuss the board member roles and responsibilities and ways that we could solicit more participation. And we have Ms. Joan Morgan here and Krista.
Okay. Thanks for coming. All right. I'm going to move on to questions.
Questions or discussion?
Questions, discussion. Yeah. Mr. Langdon.
I have a question for the two previous board members here. From your point of view, what do you feel were the reasons that there was a lack of participation on this board?
Go ahead. Don't know totally, but I mean, other counties have done a lot for history. We have sadly done nothing with the history of Northport and it is very sad, okay? We try to get some momentum here and there on board and that's not, not upon ourselves. We have these Northport dates, I think we've got the uphold copy. It has not been updated. It's our board ended.
Okay. Hold on. I think we're getting-
Is your microphone lit up?
You have a microphone hiding behind your water.
Yeah.
Ah, we got a red light on. Anyway.
There you go.
Okay. So basically, I don't know. We tried to get more members. Some people should care. I'm not saying that no one cares, okay? But I'm saying that the history of Northport, going back from the beginning, has been very shabbily done, okay? I went through, before Gene died, he called me over and we went through every single one. He had a first edition of every single newspaper from the first year and that we went through it all. And he wanted me to take it all and say, let it be your garage, not mine, okay? And I went through them and believe me, they were ready to rip. You know, you're so careful looking at them. But there was a lot about, you know, so-and-so got the Alamanda Award, you know, but there wasn't a lot about whatever. I went, my husband and I went to everybody we could go to for the history of their organization, including Alice White for, you know, her stuff and the art board and whatever, just whatever. The Northport dates is not complete. The Northport date certainly doesn't have anything. We have begged people, give us the information because basically the starting point would be at least have the people and the information down there to build upon, okay? Frankly, your room in the back where you have the stuff, go through it. It's pathetic. I'm sorry, it is. All right. I've gone through it. Ed D. LaSalle's family must have really pushed a few things on him because there's a bunch of stuff back there on him. And there's some view of Northport from Gene, okay? Gene and I were called in to do the original book on Northport. And I said to Gene, you want to do it? And he said, hell, no. And I said, hey, all right, I agree with you, you know? And that's when, that's when it was, you know, given. And Marshall did a good job and he tried to do a good job. And I talked to him a lot and we tried to give him a lot of information. And he tried to be very thorough. I mean, I remember I took him to Lorena Daly, the first one I took him to, to interview. And she knew all about the history of Little League, but she was dying of cancer, so I knew we had to get there. And he took, you know, like an hour and a half tapes from her and all this stuff. So he tried, you know? I've gone through that book and a lot of the information from the Northport dates, and believe me, I've used some of the stuff from that book, okay? The Northport dates, I think it's a starting point, you know, where we can add on to because I don't want this history lost. I mean, I'm sad because truly, I mean, I sit there and I think the other day at McKibben's Park really pointed out to me, none of you knew McKibben's. Okay? He was a great man. Julie knew him. Julie and I knew him, but none of the rest of you. And he should be known, you know? I mean, we all know Gene, okay? We all know, but you don't know all the stuff that Gene did, okay? And, but all these other people that did a lot, and I was saying to Alice a little while ago, a good one, Zadnabellny, okay? If it wasn't for him, you wouldn't have the Mediterranean finishes. He cost Walmart a million and a half dollars, okay? Because we weren't going to have the strip malls, we weren't going to have the Mediterranean finishes. His bloke committee, which was business owners on Tamiami Trail, okay? Vanessa was part of it and some others were part of it, you know, made that happen, you know? Things need to be recorded. Another thing from Old World, they gave almost $2 million to MDA, okay? Is that, you know, from all of the festivals and the 5K races and everything they had? Because of course, you know, he had MD and he wanted to help that organization. A lot of great people spent a lot of time and did a lot of things. And I'll tell you what, I'm discouraged. And I'll tell you another reason I'm discouraged. Recently, the CHAT, which is the community health, okay? They were going to have a walking tour of Northport and they're starting at the library, okay? And they were going to be going around, which would have been the first Biscayne Plaza, our first plaza, you know, showing up Northport Boulevard, Church Road and all of this stuff, okay? I spent three days putting together all the information from that. You walked out of there and the homeless had disappeared, okay, who were there just the day before almost, all right? And I'm trying to give them this information just because that whatever. They didn't care, okay? What their survey had to have is how many stop signs, is there any schools in the area? You know, is there any churches on our way through and things like that? That is what their survey wanted. They didn't even listen. And I'm not just blaming them. It's the whole thing. We really, you know, need to put an emphasis on it because frankly, there's only a few of us, I hate to say it, I'm getting close to the only one, that know a lot of this history. Alice knows a lot of the history, okay? But not all of it. Julie knows a lot of the history. She was here a long time. But you know, we really, you know, our voices are getting fewer and fewer and this history's going to be lost. There are so many times through the decades when I've said, oh, my God, you don't know this? And it's like, you know? All right?
Joan, what might you suggest, or either of you really? What recommendations would you have for getting this work done?
Well, we need more people for sure. And one of the issues that I kind of fell into when we first organized and started having our meetings, it was in the evening. And granted, we didn't get a whole lot of people coming in, but we did have a few come in. But when we moved daytime hours, that was it. We had lost a person that was attending in the evening. Causes change. And I realized that it costs the city money to have, you know, a representative from the city with us, but you got to spend money in order to make things work. And it's not going to work if we don't spend money. And to go along with what Joan said, there's a lot of history. We went through pretty much of the history of Northport with her list. And we came up with, I think, a really good list of history of Northport. My perspective is a little before hers. My perspective is the land was here before the city was here. And that's my take of history. In addition to the fact that we had an archaeologist who was on board with us, who unfortunately isn't here today, she had another perspective, which I kind of go along with, was the older part of Northport. There are things that I did some preliminary research on, but really needed an in-depth verification research on the Turpentine Dock, the railroads stop, which is maybe part of eastern, western part of the city at any rate. But that needs to be professionally done. And again, you got to spend money if you want the city of Northport to have a good history and to have people interested in that history.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I have one more question.
Sure.
If you can give me leave to that. Do you think that an advisory group to the commission is the best vehicle for getting this work done? Or a Mid and Ad Hoc working group be a better way? What's your thought on that?
If we want to be a big city, you need something connected to the government. Both gentlemen and I were on the county's historic commission. I was on the historic preservation board in addition to being on the commission. If you want to be a big city, you got to act like a big city. You got to have it connected to the government because the government gets things done and ad hoc committee can't get done.
It's going to be hard to get some of this history. And actually, let me tell you, the Turpentine Farms, until he talked about them, I never knew about them, okay? So that's going back before my 51 years here, all right? And it was fascinating. I'm going, really, you know? So it was kind of like we had the two perspectives, the older, older, and then I had the more modern and the more involved in the political and whatever. But there is so much. I mean, that Northport dates is certainly not the end all, you know? I mean, there are so many things that we need to add and people who did something. How do you get them out of the woodwork if their relatives are still here and say, hey, my great grandfather did whatever? Winsell is a good example. He was our first, he was our first kind of like unofficial protector of wildlife and everything else in Northport, but only he wasn't paid. I think he was all volunteer, okay? His son or grandson recently wrote back, okay, and said, my grandfather would not like this place anymore, you know? I mean, where's the place for the animals and all of this kind of stuff? But I mean, what he did and the time he gave, I mean, he was a legend. He was a legend in this time back when. And he was the only one we had that were representing those animals almost. But you know, you're coming from a time and a place where it's going to hard to reproduce everything and make it accurate, you know? And unfortunately, so many of the families have died off, have gone away. But we do have something else that has happened, all right? Along with that, in the last 20, 30 years, you have, you have now a second and third generation of businesses, you know, that's happening. So you're kind of creating some of your own history. The same thing happened in Inglewood, Lemon Bay, when we first started there teaching, okay? No one had a history, no one cared, you know, town center, nothing to do with my family. But look at what they've got now, okay? Look at the fact that there are so many major businesses, and you even know the people, the dignums, the hinks and all of those, that became, that established Lemon Bay. And now Lemon Bay truly is established and these people are going to make sure that history is acknowledged. Frankly, there are so few of us left that can put our brains together and make sure because I want it accurate. I want it, I want it accurate. I want the people acknowledged that did some of these things because we had nothing. A great example of this, one of the people we had coming to our historic board, okay, got Farley, okay, from Farley's Funeral Home, okay? Anyway, Mark Farley, okay, not the ones down here, Mark Farley. And he's telling us how we got the police Hall of Fame. I mean, I never knew that story before we even had one cop that got one penny on the police force, you know? And there's so much of our history that could be so different, but we really need to. And one thing that always sticks out in my mind is 1974, when I-75 was going through, okay? And John Deere, we could have been the Jones Luke. They wanted to build a hotel, a restaurant, and a gas station there. And Marge Geno said over her dead body, because it would cost three more cops. And I said, but it would pay for your whole police force, okay? That one action, that one action, can you imagine how different the history of Northport would be? Maybe it'd been worse, okay? But the fact if we didn't have some of these pioneers and we didn't have, and the John Zach and Bellney always sticks out to me and the fact of the beautification and of course, what Alice is doing too. But of course, the fact of that, you know, the fronts of these places are not going to be just strip malls and things like that, you know, our city wouldn't be what it is. And these people, their legacy and that is just going to be lost.
Thank you for that. I yield the floor, Madam Mayor.
All right. Good discussion and thank you, Commissioner, for bringing some of those questions forward. Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah. As one of the early instigators of creating this board, one of the saddest parts was seeing it kind of have to go on hiatus.
Oh, yeah. We didn't want that.
You know, we, the original intent of creating this board was recognizing many of the things you said. If we don't start somewhere in collecting this history, it's, it's never going to get done.
Right.
And that was the easiest way we thought of being able to start collecting the information, gathering the old time stories and stuff like that. One of the things, the earliest things that we had requested was to have a timeline so that people can see some of the history. If you don't see history, you only go by how much history you have only witnessed. And so many new people coming into our city, they think this is how Northport's always been. And then they get upset when they see development happening, not realizing, wait a minute, this was all nothing but green pasture at some point and trees and wildlife. So we really wanted to have some kind of historical timeline. And we suggested like on the first floor and then maybe up here on the second floor in chambers. And unfortunately, that never moved to fruition.
No.
And, and I really think kind of what you were saying, you got to spend money if you're going to start teaching about history. Because no, you know, the books are almost gone.
They are gone.
Yeah.
They are gone.
They are gone. Last I heard, there was only like a dozen left. So we have got to do stuff. And yes, it's going to take money to do that. And we actually at one point had money budgeted to do this timeline and have it similar to, if you've ever been to the county building and outside of county chambers, you can see the timeline. And I can't imagine that that costs millions of dollars to do, but it is a start.
And we started doing that. So that's why I did the Northport dates with the timeline. And also what we did as the committee, and I didn't agree with all of it, but I did agree with a lot of it, we took 10-year segments.
Exactly.
And said, what are the top five, six things in that 10-year segment, okay? So we did kind of like start that way. There are problems in some of it because some of it, do you base it all on the commission? Do you base it all on whatever? Are they big parts of it? Are they small parts of it? I mean, whatever. I mean, it's just kind of like where you put your emphasis. And there's disagreements among that too, that's for sure. But it's kind of like, how do you get people, ordinary people, involved with something that had nothing to do with them back 20, 30, 40 years ago and really invested in it? Boca Grant's done a beautiful job of it. You know, there's some areas that have done a beautiful job of the history and have the historic centers and things like that. I'll tell you one of the areas I wanted to start, and I think I've told a lot of you individually about this, and I'm really appalled that we don't have it. I believe a placard, and I tried to get a placard, that is a lot of hard work to do. That's not an easy thing to do. But it should be up at Biscayne Plaza. That was our first police, fire department, city hall, everything was there. The guns for the police department were in the back of Al Haysham's car, locked in his car, okay? I mean, I've told everyone this. The bad guy was put in the corner and there was a tape around the chair and he was, you know, handcuffed almost to the chair until they could transport him. We didn't have an ambulance service. They used the hearse from Farley's. Farley had a good idea many, many years ago. This is going to be a place of old people. Let's build a funeral home. They weren't stupid. They were smart. You know, they knew that this was going to be a lucrative place and they built it many, many years ago. But it's kind of like all of this stuff, Northport Bank now Wells Fargo, started in Bill Earnshaw's third bedroom of his house. And as soon as that bank got out of there and got into a mobile home, Ann Lee had another child to fill up that bedroom so they couldn't start another business there, okay? I mean, you know, all of these interesting histories, and our history has been interesting.
Oh, yeah.
There are things that happened that were really, you know, very, very interesting.
To add on to what Joan is saying, we discussed this in many of our meetings about having marker placed-
There, that should be.
-in certain places in the city that were memorable for the development of the city. It kind of just all fell apart.
Well, one of the other things that we had done was we had created a local registry of historic places. And to my knowledge, I don't think there's anything in that local registry listed as historic places.
Well, there's a lot of things over 50 years old now that should, could, would qualify for it. And then we had-
And then we had, we had, oh gosh, who was the guy? And he started, and we were going to do a lot of history with it, and that fell apart, you know? So there's been times here and there, and it's all falling apart, but yeah, we really need to. I mean, some of the things, and another example, if you go over to the flea market, that used to be in Inglewood, the big one. I mean, go look at the plaque in front of that. That was the largest lumber mill in Florida, having over 1,300 people working there at one point. Who would have guessed it now, you know? But what history that should be there. I mean, as I say, my first place would be Biscayne Plaza, that shopping center. But here again, to get a placard, because I've gone to the people who work on the placards and that, you have to have a lot of history proven, developed, you know, really down, before you can even go for something like that. And that's going to take more than we have to come up with that stuff, because, you know, you don't just put a placard because I'm telling you it happened, and a couple other people that were here are telling you it happened. You have to have documentation.
Well, I remember when City Hall was over by where the fire station maybe was.
Oh yeah.
You know, and that was, that was the whole City Hall complex and departments and everything like that. One of the things that I really question when I look back on what we created with the Historical Cultural Advisory Board is that we made the requirements, because we didn't want just anybody to be on this board. We wanted there to be not only a love of history, but some expertise of history to be on the board. And one of the requirements was that four members shall be practicing or retired professionals from any of the following disciplines, and there's like 10 disciplines that were listed, with a demonstrated commitment to historic and cultural preservation, and no more than two members from the same discipline. Do you think having those constraints hindered getting?
I hate, I would love to say yes. I would love to say yes, that was the only problem, change it, and wham, we got a room of 30 people. But frankly, I have begged people, people that know the history, people that had some information on it and things like that. Either they're old, like me, okay? Either they're old, if they have some of it, and some of it, we went to, and I'll give you a great example of someone who died recently, Mary Light, man, she had the history, okay? And we tried to, I tried to get her with Marshall and all, but by that time, guess what? It was called dementia, you know? And it was gone, and she just, she had it. She would have had the information, you know? And it's kind of like, that's the problem. I don't really think, even if you put out, come to the meetings and everyone will get a $25 gift certificate, I really don't see, I don't know what we have to do. But we tried over those years to get people to come. You know, we tried to get them to be on it, and we, I know people care. But do they care enough to give up their time and energy to really work on this? That's the problem.
Well, one of the things that, you know, everybody is aware that I am out of office in November of '24, and I really was looking forward to applying to be on this board if the board is resurrected. But when I looked at our membership requirements, I wouldn't be able to be on.
I hardly make it.
You know?
Really, I don't.
Yeah.
I taught history, but I wasn't, you know, I wasn't, I mean, it was not like, I taught it in the school. It was different than actually almost what they're asking for here.
Right, but because you were a teacher, that's part of it.
Yeah.
But me, I don't have any of these qualifications, so I couldn't, but I definitely have a love of history. I have 30 years living in this town, not to mention now being an elected official. But I would not change a code to accommodate myself, absolutely not. But then I sit there and I wonder, how many other people are out in the city of Northport that have a love and knowledge of history of Northport that don't fulfill this requirement? Because if they wanted to join the board, the first thing they're going to do is look at what's required and go, shoot, I don't qualify for any of this.
As I say, I wish I knew, I wish I could say that that was the only, but I don't know of one person who we've tried to coerce into being part of the board, that has backed out, saying that they wouldn't make the qualification.
But I think you're right, I think it's too tight. I mean, I overqualify, I've got a master's.
Of course.
So, you know, I'm not worried about being.
When I saw your application and stuff, I'm like, yes, I remember it.
But I agree with you, if there's a person who has an intense history of, of, of love of history, why would we want to limit them from getting on, getting involved? I mean, this, the point of this whole thing is getting people involved, whether they're just observers of our history or people who are researching it, make it presentable to people to see. So, yeah, I agree with you that maybe the restrictions are too tight. We don't have to have people with even a bachelor's degree, I don't care, if they're interested in history.
How about the fact they just lived here, and they lived the history? I mean, you didn't have to be an architect, and you didn't have to be a history teacher, and you didn't have to be involved in government to know some of the things that happened, and know who Strut Farm came around, and knows who brought ice around, and knows who did this and did that and the other thing. You know, you just, just the fact that you lived here and witnessed some of the history.
Commissioner McDowell, can we move on to maybe some other questions? Is that okay for now, or comments?
I only had two, but go ahead.
Okay. Just so that we, I don't lose my train of thought here. Commissioner Stokes, Vice Mayor Stokes?
Being the newest probably out of this group to the city, I see a different type perspective. I mean, Northport, as from the little I've known, in the eight years I've lived here, I've learned some amazing things about this city. But one thing I know, basic human nature is, people may think they want to volunteer, but when push comes to shove and they've been asked to do the kind of work and heavy lifting it takes to do a good job in a project or an area like this, you don't get that support. If this city wants to preserve its history, my personal opinion is it needs to put its money where its mouth is, and it needs to spend the money, and it needs to, if necessary, hire a professional group of consultants. Yes, taxpayer dollars, God forbid, to actually get involved, establish a mission, strategic priorities. I heard some great ideas from plaques in certain historic areas, to, you know, a detailed, accurate timeline of the history of the city. That takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of investigation, it takes people going out there and finding those people who are still with that firsthand knowledge. And none of that's going to happen with a group of part-time volunteers from the city who think it's cool to know a little about the history of the city. It is never going to happen, it hasn't happened, that's why the committee failed. The advisory board compliments to you guys, but it failed because there's not the level of interest. It needs to be funded and supported by this city commission. If we want to spend the money and make this commitment, because we have some interesting things coming down the pipe. It'd be wonderful if and when Mineral Springs gets developed. Not only does that area have a wealth of history to it, but the rest of Northport does. Wouldn't it be wonderful to have a museum, whether on that site or nearby, that really talked to the history of our area, our city, and all the things that are involved? And that would excite community interest. But at the early stages, it's going to take some professional assistance to make this happen, in my estimation.
We talked about the Warminal Springs and having a museum up there many, 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 many times, okay? We also talked about something which I thought was almost going to go through for a while, and that is, if we can't get them, everyone to write the history, at least come in and give us an oral history of what you know. With the Holocaust, the Holocaust Museum, that's what they have a lot of it, is oral histories from these people. They're not going to sit here and write a book for you, but they can sit here and you can hear the emotions, and you can hear what happened, and they can tell you their own story in their own way. We talked about that, and we talked with the city about it, and then it turned out that we couldn't have people in here unless we had city people there watching them and involved with it, and all of this kind of stuff. We went through all of that stuff, and it just became a 000. Because you needed city personnel to be involved with it, and who's going to document these things and all this kind of stuff. And that went down the tubes too, but that's, that's the avenue, and believe me, though, historic things at Warminal Springs were talked about just about every meeting.
I'm sure. To me, you said, it takes, there has to be a commitment on the part of city leadership to say, this is important enough to do, that the city's going to put its resources behind it to get it going. I'm not saying it should be a departmentally run thing for uninfinitum, but it should be something that to get it to a point where it's established and there's sufficient interest and involvement by the community, it needs to be done by direction of this city, at the expense of this city. Otherwise, I don't think there's enough interest.
I tell you, I'm worried, I'm worried about my own brain, truly. Because, I mean, hey, I'm 78 years old now, baby, okay? And the fact is that I do know the history, and I do know this, and I do know that, and I can remember it. Can't remember what I did yesterday, but I can remember that, okay?
You're here to pick someone up, it's hard.
But the fact is, that's going to go downhill, and I'll give you the example of the one we all admire so much, Gene Matthews. I mean, I went with him, and I kept on saying, Gene, we have got to get the stuff in your brain out now, because you could see what was happening. And basically, you know, he had lost it. I mean, I mean, there's no question about, he did not have it anymore. So some of these people we went to to try to, okay, now you've got to give it to me, we have to have it now, while you're still here. And it really was gone, and he kept on saying to me, no, you have more than I do. No, I didn't, I honestly didn't. He was here, I was at, I'm in May for 20 years. He was here, you know, 24/7 in Northport. He was the only one on the school board, he was the only one on the county commission. He did the view of Northport, you know? But it was gone, it was gone, okay? And it was hard even for the key to go back to that family and get the information. They're taking it from what I'm giving them about their own relatives. And, you know, we tried. I mean, I wanted Gene on that historic board more than you can imagine. You know, I bugged him more than you want to know about. But anyway, but that's what we need, and we don't, there's not that many of us around that really know the history, but we really need to get it out. And there are some, and I look at Alice with People for Trees, I don't know all your history with that, but boy, what a history that needs to be out. The Arts Center, all the stuff that they've done, you know? I mean, there's people that have really worked in these little pocketed areas, you know? That the other people don't know about. I have no idea what the Art Board did, and they don't want me in their building because I can't draw, okay? But on the other hand, what has, what a unique and vital history that they have, and I want it out. It deserves to be out.
Mr. Stokes, to your point, I agree with you that there should be somebody in the city government, hey, employee, preferably somebody with a doctorate in either history or archaeology. But you still need the citizen involvement with a board to feed the information to this guy.
Absolutely.
This is how we get things done. But you're right, you got to spend the money to do it.
To me, it takes a collaboration, if the city determines that it's, this is a commitment, we're going to make a commitment to this, we're going to put some resources behind it, then it can buy the talent to help get this coordinated. It can also partner with private interests. But there has to be some, a level of organization somewhere that can then go out and reach into the community and pull these people together to expect people like yourselves or others. You two can't do it by yourself, you couldn't find two more passionate people about this. You people, I mean, if we could only quadruple the two of you, we'd have a team. So where do we get them?
I don't know.
You know, city has to make this commitment.
Marshall Grove came the closest to that and pulled it together, because with the 50th, they did a lot. I mean, that's the time when we really concentrated on this stuff, and we really did it, and there was a lot of different discussions and ideas of how we were going to do that book and all that. And Marshall really tried, I mean, he really put his heart and soul to it. But he was the closest to doing anything at the time. But even the book, there's a, there's a lot of parts of the history that aren't in there. But he did, you know, he did a marvelous job, God bless him. But even he, okay, at the end, he lost it. I'm sorry, but if you knew him, you knew he lost it. You know, dementia got him too. And his files, okay, because I talked to his wife about it, his files and all, he put under different passwords, and he forgot them, okay? Now, she doesn't, because I talked to her about it, I talked to her about the fact, would it be worth the expense that we could get, because during the board, we said, do we pay for it? We can get the expense to get those files open and all this kind of stuff. And she said that really, she didn't think that there was enough new material in there that would have been worth the expense. But that's the problem, I mean, it's like, you know, at the 50th, which is going back a ways now, we came as close to doing something as we've ever done, all right? And a lot of the boxes, like Helen Rainbow, for example, supposedly had these red boxes, I'm hearing about where she had a lot of the information. Well, some nice people at City Hall liked the red boxes, and so we throw out the information because we want the red boxes, they're nice, man, we want to store our stuff in there. You know, we have really done a horrible job, but I don't know how, Debbie, I don't know how we excite people. We might get one more or two more, but how do we excite people to do this? And definitely, we'd have to change this, if you've lived in Northport for more than so many years, you automatically qualify, you know, I mean, truly. But, you know, how do we get them and get the various parts of this city to talk about what happened? You know, the road, the drainage, some of the stuff with general development, which was just off-the-wall stuff, you know? But hey, we're still stuck with the drainage problems and that, that they, that they developed and that, so part of the history's still with us, that's for sure. And I don't know how you do it, I don't know how you do it at this point. Someone would have to be paid a lot of money to go back and really almost do, become an investigative reporter and really find it all, and you would be paying a lot of money to do that.
Can we hear from Commissioner Emmerich?
I may know an investigative reporter, just saying.
Okay.
No, you had brought up earlier about the demise of the group, because it switched from night to day. If it was to go back to the nighttime meetings, what would be an appropriate time, do you think, for most of the members to feel comfortable? Because I know a lot of, and I'm not, I'm part of that group too, the older people don't like driving at night. So what would be a very decent time for your meeting?
I'm a forward, yes. I'm probably older than you are, I know I'm older than you are.
I know I am.
I don't like to drive at night either, but I'm so enthused about history that, me, I'll do it. It doesn't matter. I agree with you that there are other people who may be interested in it, and if we do it at night, they may not want to go. I'm not looking at the older people right now, I want to try and get younger.
Exactly.
They're the ones that have to live with this history.
But I'm also looking at staff time too. So we wouldn't want to have to shut down shop at 5 o'clock to have a meeting at 8 o'clock. I'm looking at, would, would 6, 7 o'clock timeline work? What was the last time you had your meetings?
We had 6.
6.
I mean, the parks and Rec 4, you know, you have all of them there at 6:30, you know?
Right, so I was trying to.
If you're interested enough, I don't, you know, I hate to say it, but I don't think the only problem was our time or the board makeup, because, I mean, you know, we can change those qualifications quickly. Getting that momentum and getting it going, you know, I wanted to put in the paper every day, please, just give us your history, give us your names, give us your people, let's look it up. You know, and it's hard. And I'll give you another example of one that really worked on this, Henry Jackimer, okay? From Mike Metreon, remember that? He was going to have, he was going to have a celebration of his life and everything else, and he hired out the Charlotte County Sports Park, and he had Lois and I, we went back to 800 people. Honest to God, he drove us nuts. If you know Henry, believe me, he can do that. He's a phenomenal person, he cares very hard, much, and he does everything. And just what he did with fireworks in this city, his fireworks could, were as good as those in Washington DC and every place else, they were phenomenal, you know? But he went back, and he came up with lists and lists and lists of people, and we contacted over 600 people to be at that place for Mike Metreon, and then we had a pouring rain, and it all fell apart and everything else. And a lot of people on the list had been dead by the time we tried to get to them. But on the other hand, I mean, it would take somebody like that, and caring that much, and working so hard. And he brought up, a lot of them were your, your people that worked in air conditioning, plumbing, I mean, people that we wouldn't know, you know? Television repair, I mean, it was phenomenal, because he came up with a whole bunch of people and going, wow, all right, let's go get them. So how do we get that momentum going, okay? That's, back to you, I don't, I don't know.
All right, thank you. I think we'd like to hear from the city clerk.
Yeah, I just wanted to let y'all know, so this board has only had, I think, maybe a total a total of eight people from twenty eighteen until now. The time was, um, at six o'clock until the last meeting of twenty twenty-one, and then it was changed to four o'clock. And even with that change, it's still maintained the same number of participants. And sadly, the two participants that are really into it turned out. They were, had two terms and they were, I think, the last two standing actually at the end.
Michelle was turned out too.
Yeah, Michelle turned out as well.
She went out too.
Yeah, so. And the other person who was with them got terminated for not showing up. So it, the time really did not change. I mean, staff, we don't have any problem in our department whether it's six o'clock or four o'clock or whatever time, but it didn't really affect the membership of the board.
But I think you can also look at that as, um, everything else stayed the same though. We're talking about, we're talking about what's required, memberships, things like that. So that's, that's a variable that was not introduced before. So that may change things.
An observation, if I may, the city has become larger.
It's become.
What we were dealing with when the board was dissolved was a sm- a smaller city. I can't say much smaller, but it was a smaller city. We don't know what we can garner now as far as memberships to this hopeful board. Uh, so all I can suggest is, let's try it. I mean, I'm willing to come back. I know Joan's willing to come back. I think one of our commissioners may join us. So that would be my suggestion. We've got a bigger city now and it's growing, obviously, with all the buildings going on. I have no problem with the building. I, I love progress, but I also love the history that was here and we need to preserve regardless.
Okay, Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, the only thing is that, um, we were going to have a museum at Oremon Springs in that master plan. That was part of the master plan that was approved before the P three even became part of the conversation. Um, and we are, to your point, while we're a growing city, we're a very transient city.
Yes.
Very transient city. We are now just starting to see multi-generational, um, residents in our city, but we are still a very transient city, a very retirement-oriented city. Um, I, I, I would love to say that we can, you know, possibly see about hiring an expert in history, but if that person doesn't know Northport, I don't know if that is actually going to be beneficial, you know? Because if you hire somebody from outside the area that doesn't know Northport, they don't have that desire to.
Feel.
So, so that's kinda where I'm hung up on, on hiring somebody. Um, I know that other cities have, and maybe it's not a volunteer board, but a totally separate government entity, uh, like a historical society of sorts that is not generally connected with government, but works with government. I don't know if that makes any sense. Where they have their own historical society, they have their own historical board, they, they do things autonomously through raising funds and stuff like that, but work very integrally with the city. Um, so I don't know if that might, and you might be able to put it in better terms than I can since you, you have the, the knowledge of that kinda thing, but.
Let me give you an example. That happened just recently in Charlotte County School System, all right? They hired a new superintendent, who I really don't know a lot about, but they hired a new superintendent. And guess what he found? He wanted to do a lot of, from everything I've heard, he's gonna be good. And he's, and he cares and all this stuff. But guess what he found out? Just what you're saying, Debbie. He didn't know the history. He didn't know the people. He didn't have the feeling.
Exactly.
So what has he done? He went and got Bob Bedford from Lemon Bay, whose father was once upon a time principal of Lemon Bay and superintendent, and now he's the principal of Lemon Bay. And he's lived in, in, in Lemon Bay and Englewood and knows Charlotte County. He just made him, in fact, he started yesterday, I think, um, as the assistant superintendent because he needed somebody who knew the history and cared and, and had that feeling, okay? And, um, you know, that's exactly what you're saying. Um, somebody coming in from the outside, I will tell you right now, because I've tried and I know the people, okay? I've tried to get the history out of some of these people, you know? And it's kinda like, and, and the ones that have been around here for a long time and, and Pete, you've been here a long time and that, and your wife and that, okay? How do we get, somebody comes in from the outside, okay? We pay him big bucks, he really cares and all this stuff. How does he get the history? How does he find out this, the little nuances that really made this place go?
The only other question I have now, I'll be completely finished because I know time is running short. Um, based on what you're saying, based on our questions, based on the experience of this board, um, if we were to extend the term limits, um, and not, maybe even not even have term limits because history, this kinda stuff is not gonna happen overnight, um, and, and remove maybe term limits, do you think that this would be a more, do you think we would be able to get some traction in starting up this board again? Or do you think we should explore a completely different avenue to try and get the history? And, and I don't know if you can even answer that question today. Um, I, I'd love to chat with you more about it i- if you don't think this is viable. Um, I'm relying on you guys to help us with this decision because we know your passion for this board.
Well, here's the deal. Doing nothing is not gonna do. We have to do something, okay? We have to try someplace, okay? And, uh, I think there has to become, maybe, maybe if we hired somebody who's ahead of it, maybe they can create the excitement and bring about and get people and all this kinda stuff. Uh, and a combination, change the rules about who can be on the committee, that's easy, okay? Change the whatever. Uh, some of it even for me to be on, you can only be on one board now when I'm back on the Parks and Rec. So, you know, that, that can be changed too. But I mean, it's kinda like, maybe we need to do a combo. Doing nothing and just saying, oh, that's not gonna work.
I agree.
Is not the answer, okay? Just trying the same old, I really don't think is gonna bring too many more people. I don't know anyone out there that's really, maybe you are, but I don't know what, too many others that are basically saying, hey, how do I get on that board? Okay? Or even are sorry that it's gone. But, you know, we gotta create the excitement. We're gonna have to bring somebody in. The city's gonna have to, all of the above is gonna have to happen. Um, we talked about where in City Hall we can have a room and we can do this and we can do that and, and have, as we said, we've gone through the decades. We've listed the things for each one. We did that where you can put a timeline up like you see. You can't put all of that stuff on the wall. No one's gonna read it all.
Of course.
But you can put the top five things or ten things for each decade.
Pictures helped too.
Yeah.
Now, the point with hiring somebody in the city to oversee this thing, essentially, you still have to have a board. You gotta feed this person that information.
Right.
Then he goes before you guys and says, here's what they came up with, why don't we do this? He's gonna have the expertise on process, okay? Not necessarily need to know the history. He'll learn the history, believe me. It took me about two years to learn the history, the pre-history of Northport. Took me about two years to learn that. And after that, it was like, you, you get to know what Northport is, especially associating with this young lady.
I'm gonna lose a guy. I mentioned comment.
No, 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 we're not related to that. But that's what needs, in my vision, that's what needs to be done. If you really wanna hire somebody, he's gonna be the overseer of this thing. He's gonna attend the meetings. He's gonna hear what's going on and he can take it back to you. I mean, it was good for us to take it back and submit to you all.
Are you talking about a liaison to the board or are you?
Well, almost like a liaison, yes.
Because we, each board had to have a liaison, so that's.
But somebody with a historical background.
Gotcha.
That, that understands the process of history and the research of history and what needs to be done. He doesn't necessarily need to know about the city. He'll learn about that as we're going on, but he definitely needs to know the process of how do you verify this information? How do you make it liter- you know, literal for the people that are observing it?
Thank you. I yield, Mayor.
All right, Commissioner Langdon.
Yeah, one quick comment. As I'm listening, I'm really hearing the need for two very distinct things. Um, I hear the need for some type of formal, ongoing board. Young people, I see the task of that board being traditional, you know, recommending things to the city. But more importantly, helping us institutionalize the recognition and documentation of history moving forward. I think young people can be extremely instrumental. Our young professionals, part of the chamber, could be great at helping that kind of thing. But I'm getting some anxiety in the pit of my stomach that's around documenting the history. We're losing people who have that kind of background and intimate knowledge. And I think in the short term, my sense is that's where we need to invest. I love the idea of oral history. You know, if we have an older person in this city that has deep personal experience with things that happened fifty, sixty years ago, let's not burden them with a committee. Let's, I would be supportive in the short term of hiring a researcher slash archivist to work with a small group of people like yourself to, to point them in the direction of the right people and the right topics. Let's get that stuff documented. And, and I'm feeling the need to do that in the short term. We can work on more of the institutional moving forward. How do we make sure that ten and twenty years from now, we're not here talking about the fact that we haven't done a good job of archiving our history? So that's sort of what I'm feeling is the need to do two things. And in the short term, invest in the oral histories and documenting and archiving, maybe working with city clerk staff, since to a certain level, it's sort of their responsibility, not historical, but to be the, the archivist of important information. But let's get that done because if we don't do that, then the rest of it probably doesn't matter quite as much to me. Just a thought.
If we have a person that's hired to do this, and I'll do Marshall Grove as the example. He didn't live here all his life, okay? A lot of that stuff he found out because he was hired to do a job and in a couple years, he certainly learned a lot and he investigated a lot and he would go to anybody I sent him to and talk to that person. And try to get that information.
Right.
And that's, and, and that's what we need. So we can't, you know, our little board of two people aren't gonna do that, but you're right, but.
Right.
Uh, and, and another source that we went to, I went to, I really pushed the high school. You have any history students? You have any ones that really involved in history, you know, you're, you know, is, uh, and all that kinda stuff? And I got nowhere.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I tried.
Yep. Vice Mayor Stokes.
Yeah, I mean, listening to everybody speaking, it really does take a little bit of everything. There has to be somebody. Commission's gonna have to make a decision. Are we gonna find someone who already exists in our city organization, who has the inclination, if not the experience, but the inclination and maybe the longevity with the city, who would take on this task? That's a city manager ask. Or do we need to go find somebody to do it without somebody spearheading it? And then igniting the passion, using the handful of resources to go out into the community, find those people who know all the answers, who know the history, who, we can draw this information from the schools. You said it, Joan. I was sitting here the whole time thinking about the schools. I mean, granted, we don't control what goes on, but it seems to me that somehow, some way, one would think that the high school in this city would have some interest in some way, shape or form in participating in this process. I don't know how or to what degree, but kids getting involved ignite parents getting involved in, involved, the city saying, gee, this is an important thing. Northport's at a crossroads. It's becoming a big city. It's transforming itself. If we don't retain the history now, if we don't capture it and save it, we're gonna lose most of it. But it's gonna take a commitment from this city commission, instruction and direction to staff to go out and find within our organization or outside, someone who may not know the city, but who has the ability to work with those handful of people who do, to truffle and to investigate and to do what Commissioner Langdon said is be an archivist, be, be a researcher and dig all this out. But it's gonna take a collaboration help. It is not gonna happen with a handful of volunteers. It's just not gonna happen. The city has to make a commitment to it. Commissioners are gonna have to. We're gonna have to say, we wanna do it and we're willing to spend a few dollars to do it and we're gonna ask city staff to go out and find the professionals or the, the expertise to do it. That's where this ends. I mean, it's not reconstituting the committee a- at a different time or, you know, finding some marketing way to try to excite people because excitement's short-lived. And when they see how much work it actually takes to do this right, they're gonna lose interest again. So someone has to drive this with the, with the fact that this city takes responsibility, the leadership takes responsibility for preserving our city's history. We wanna do that, we should do it. If not, then this has been a nice conversation and we spent a couple hours, but we're gonna see no viable results from it and.
Let me tell you another thing that we did, and this is back with the fiftieth, okay? We had, some of you might remember this, we had contests, essay contests, okay? And what we did is we took the top three students and we had a panel, I had a panel of fifty-six people judging them. And no names were on them or even what school they were from. But anyway, we took the top three students that they decided, this group of fifty-six, and, uh, we, uh, we gave them bond certificates. We spent over three thousand dollars on this stuff through the, the, the fiftieth committee. We got a lot of money out of you from that, I'll tell you what, that's pretty good. Anyway, but what was so interesting about the essays that these kids wrote, and it's exactly what you're saying, all of a sudden, we were seeing from the kids saying, we like Northport because it's clean, because there, it still is woods, because the people are friendly. And we also got other things. All of a sudden, I am reading in there and I'm saying to myself, oh my gosh, that was the grand, grandson of so-and-so that did so-and-so, you know? Because these kids were going through, and all I can do is kind of relate it to the Holocaust that I used to do in my classrooms. I said, your assignment is to go to your family and find out anything that they knew about the Holocaust and how your family was affected. If we had an essay contest saying, tell us what your family knows about the history, we might have some of these little buggers that we don't know their names anymore because now they're the grandparents, your grandsons, granddaughters, great-grandsons, great-granddaughters with different last names. But you know, you might get some of these sparks of information, okay? I mean, we gotta spark it. And when, if you're talking about kids, you gotta spark it. You wanna get some of the high school kids, you wanna committee at the high school that's all of a sudden involved with this, you gotta make it happen that they wanna be involved with it. They're not gonna start it.
And it'll excite their parents and maybe their grandparents. And it's the grandparents who may know more than we think they know.
They might have the name of a person that they didn't really realize that their parents were that important in the town.
All these different things can get it going, but it falls to us, Commissioners.
Commissioner Emmerich.
Yeah, the last comment I got in, uh, you know, uh, Vice Mayor brought up the, the scenario on, do we have anybody in-house? She's sitting right in the back room.
Absolutely.
I didn't wanna call her out by name. Well, I, I didn't call her out by name. But, but I'm looking at job security and I know she plans on sticking around for another twenty years, so why not give her something to do?
That's right. Give her more responsibility.
That's all I.
Okay, great discussions. Um, I just wanted to, um, there's not much I'm gonna add at all because all of you have done really great in bringing out a lot of the, the concerns and, and listening to them. Definitely, yes, putting your money where your mouth is. Um, and I served on the Sarasota County Historic Commission and that was a budgeted department, so, and they were very specific tasks, but they were backed up by knowing that there was money to do whatever it was that we were coming up with or we wanted to see done. So that's definitely something that we would have to consider. As far as the, we talked about these professions or these backgrounds, I, I'm not in favor of having those listed. Again, I think it, it's intimidating. I mean, somebody wants to, as Commissioner McDowell said, you know, I'm passionate about history. I just want to do this, and I read this, and I say, this isn't me. And we don't know how many people are being turned off because they see that. And they say, I just love history, and I just want to, to learn more about Northport and pass that along. So I'm always very leery when I see things that are listed, like if you have this background, because I'm thinking, well, I don't. Like, I love to, I love to bake, but I'm not a master chef. And that would, you know, if somebody said you had to have this course, I would say, well, forget it. So I would be in favor of really seriously looking at that.
May I make a statement on that? The qualifications that I looked at on there are really for Historic Preservation Board up in Sarasota. That's where they came from.
Right.
The commission itself didn't have those. You had a couple of things, I guess, you had to have a representative of history, you had the rep of archaeology, but that was it. Other than that, you could be a regular citizen of Sarasota County.
Right, which is what I was.
Which is.
I just, I loved history, and that was my outlet, and I, I don't have any of these backgrounds.
When I first saw this, I was surprised that the number of qualifications, and I thought, this isn't the Historic Preservation Board, because that's, that's a high-level board. And they do a lot of things that cost money.
Right.
But the commission itself didn't do that.
And as I say, I do not qualify for this board. I shouldn't have been put on. I did not, I do not qualify.
You're an at-large citizen.
Yeah, but I mean, but it didn't, I do not qualify under these qualifications. You know, I taught history, I didn't, I wasn't preserving it.
Okay, so Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to see about getting a couple of consensuses and maybe giving city manager some direction or city clerk some direction.
That sounds good.
If that's okay. All right, the first, did city manager want to speak?
No, he pointed out the city clerk.
Sorry, I just saw his hand up like. The first consensus I'd like to get is to direct the city clerk to work with the city attorney to remove items one through 10 and have seven at-large Northport residents be eligible to be on the board.
Okay, so we're looking for consensus. So Commissioner McDowell, I'm assuming you're a yes for that?
I am, yeah.
Okay.
I'm a yes, but would we want to preclude anyone who doesn't live in the city but has a deep knowledge of the history of the city from participating? So I mean, yes, I, I do support the consensus.
And this is just conversation because, you know, it's hard to make a consensus in motion without really knowing where everybody is.
Right.
What if we were to have like seven at-large with only allowing two non-residents? That way, then the majority are residents, but you could have some non-residents on it.
I would be for that.
Okay, but if you don't have non-residents, they could all be residents. Is that how?
Correct.
Okay.
A maximum of seven, but, and this is where staff is going to have to work with the, the language. Seven, seven members, preferably all Northport residents, with the caveat of limiting it to two non-residents.
Okay, so is that in your consensus then? You want to change it?
Yeah, so we can modify it.
Okay, what do you think?
I'm on board.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
While theoretically I am, I'm against this. And the reason is, I think it's premature. There's not been the interest, there's not going to be the interest to put and task clerk's office and attorney's office to spend time and resources to do this. For what reason? For a committee that doesn't exist because there aren't people who have a level of interest? This commission, if it wants to preserve the history of the city in Northport, has to make a commitment to do so. It needs to establish an organization or the resources to do it, needs to instruct city staff through city manager or city clerk to do it. To simply go in here and, and wordsmith some membership rules, to me, just seems a squandering of resources at this time. But I see the value. At some point, yes, I don't disagree that these are onerous requirements for membership. I just don't think there's any need to do it now because I haven't seen anything that tells me that there's anything that exists without a commission's commitment to, to spend the resources and find the resources to do this right. Who are you going to get? So we, we change all this and make it easier? I listened to Joan say, she doesn't think there's ever been a person who's, who they have sought out to join this committee, who said, oh, I don't think I can be on this committee because I'm not qualified. That's what I heard.
Right.
I don't think that's the case. So I don't think changing any of this is going to mean a hell of beans until this city commission or a future city commission decides, is the history of this city important enough for us to do something about and put our money where our mouth is and get the resources to do it and jumpstart it, and then coordinate with people who care and get the excitement going and doing it the right way? Because otherwise, really not. I mean, I don't want to say we were wasting our time. It's never a waste of time to talk about wonderful stuff like this. But it is, to me, not a good use of resources to spend time on this. So I don't support the consensus. So Pete?
Fisher?
Yeah, I was in support of this. We got to start somewhere. And if by changing the requirements to become part of the board, that's going to show initiative to be able to become a board. Once they have the board, then I agree with Vice Mayor about using other resources to put our money where our mouth is, but we have to start somewhere. The other thing I was talking about, was thinking about too, and I'm sure it's coming in the next consensus, but the term limits as well, you know, being changed to where giving this board a fresh start now via the requirements and whatever's holding everything back, brings in a new day to where they can get that excitement, come onboard, come back to the commission and say, hey, we need A, B, and C because this is what our board has determined, this is where we're going with it. So I agree with this now. I do. And I don't think it's a waste of resources to change this.
Can I just weigh in real quick?
Yeah.
Okay. And I understand that Commissioner Stokes is not in favor of this consensus, so it fails. I will make a motion. But I said at the beginning, I have multiple consensuses. This is the first one I started. There are others that are coming that I have kind of jotted down. But because you are not in support unless you're changing that based on what I just said, I will make a motion then. I will, since the consensus failed, I'll make a motion to direct the city clerk to work with the city attorney to change the makeup of the Historical and Cultural Advisory Board to be seven members with a maximum of two non-residents, removing the professional requirements listed as one through 10.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell and sec, oh, I'm sorry. City Clerk?
Yeah, I was just wondering, when you say the two non-residents, is there going to be any requirements for these non-residents, or is it just any non-resident that wants to be on the board?
Non-residents. I would assume they are going to be Florida residents or, you know? But at this point in time, it's going to come back. So it, since we have a second, at this point in time, this is going to come back, and we can tweak it as needed. But this is, this is a starting point, and I think that we got to start somewhere to everybody's point that I've heard today. And this is just the first consensus slash motion that I have on, that I'd like.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell and that was seconded by Commissioner Emmerich. City Clerk, can you read that back?
To direct the city clerk to work with the city attorney to amend section 4-191 of the city code to remove items one through 10 and have a maximum of seven members with five at-large members and preferably but not more than two non-residents.
And removing the professional requirements.
Yes, I did.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
One through 10, right.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else?
Mayor, can I add something as a second? And the reason I like the non-residentials, because you could have had some people that lived in Northport but now reside in Inglewood, Port Charlotte, Venice. They could have moved out, but they can still contribute on their lifestyles growing up in Northport. So I agree with that 100%.
Right, okay. All right, let's vote. And that passes four to one with Vice Mayor dissenting. Did you want to add anything?
Other than, you know, for reasons stated, this is an advisory board that has been suspended or dissolved. It does, for all intents and purposes, does not exist to spend resources to change the rules of membership before it's brought back. Just seems like upside down to me. So those are my reasons.
Mayor, I'll make another motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to include in this advisory board reconstruction to have a term limit of five years. I'd go no term limit, but that's, so, see if I get a second to that motion.
I'll second for discussion. But if you, and this is my part of the discussion, if you have a term limit for five years, what if they've already been on the board for five years? Prior to now, we're struck, we're trying to reenact this board, so they would be termed out already with that five years.
Great point. So I don't know how staff would word it, that starting with the new ordinance, that anybody that served before, they're basically starting with a clean slate.
That's the way it would have to be.
Yeah.
I mean, because they could be termed out before they even start.
Yeah, great point.
You know, and I'd like to get them reactivated in the group.
That was my intent, but you, you verbalized something.
But when you went five years, I mean, they could have already spent five years on the board.
So do you want to try and make the amendment?
Okay, since, let me look at it this way. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to where, when the board is reenacted, that the term limit status is also reenacted.
Is.
For the five years.
Okay.
It starts over when it's reenacted. Does that make sense?
I'll second that amendment. I'm sure staff will hear what we're saying and be able to put it in legal terms.
Right.
That the intent is to start this board over with no term limits even previous.
None held against them previously, yes.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor by Commissioner Emmerich and seconded by Commissioner McDowell regarding term limits.
Is this a motion or consensus?
Motion.
Motion.
City clerks, can you read that amendment back?
Yes, but I did not fix the wording. So it's when a board member is reenacted, that the term limit status starts over.
Pretty good, okay. And if there's nothing else, let's vote on that. And that passes four to one with Vice Mayor dissenting. Did you want to comment?
For the same reasons as the former. Again, I say, there is no advisory board. This commission voted to dissolve, basically, that advisory board not that long ago, and here we are, changing the rules of membership and talking about term limits, and I just don't see any reason for it. I'm not opposed to it, but it's like the cart before the horse.
Okay, yes.
If I remember correctly, we suspended it.
Yes.
And it's pending all of this, and once this all happens, then that suspension is removed. Okay, so I'll make another motion.
We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This was an amendment to your, to your motion, correct?
Sorry.
Do we want to read that back, or are you okay? Are we okay to vote for that?
On the motion as amended.
Yes, right, okay, so let's vote on that. And that passes four to one with Vice Mayor dissenting, and I'm assuming for reasons already given, okay.
This next motion has to do with something, this is going to take probably three or four months to get brought back to us for adoption. And at that, about that time, city manager is going to be working on his city manager budget. So at this point, I would like to make a motion to have city manager work with his staff to create a potential position for a, I think Commissioner Langdon called it an archivist. I think that was the term. Researcher archivist position in the city to include a job description for budgetary considerations for fiscal year '24, '25.
I'll second that.
Madam Mayor, I have just a point of order or clarification.
Sure.
We went into decision-making without requesting public comment, something I did all the time.
Oh, yes, right.
Look at you pointing it out then.
Census.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I got sidetracked there. So City Clerk? Do we have any public comment?
There is none.
Okay, thanks for. Can I say something? What we have, wait, we have a motion. Commissioner McDowell, are you good with your motion?
I am. If City Clerk has it, I'll be happy to have her read it back, otherwise I'll try to repeat it.
To direct the city manager to create a potential position for a research archivist to include a job description for budgetary considerations for fiscal year '24-25.
All right, did we get a second?
Did for me.
Okay. And city manager, you're, you're in the queue here.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This position, as it relates to what you're trying to accomplish, would do better serve in the clerk's office, being created by the clerk's office, not the city manager's office. The clerk is responsible for the advisory boards and the information that we're talking about today, not the manager's office.
Do you want to note then?
Okay, and I thought city manager created staff. I didn't think City Clerk had that.
I can create positions within my department.
She can ask for.
However, I will say that other municipalities that I know of that have a historic or an archivist is under the city manager, sorry. But yes, I'm in charge of records, but not in charge of creating history, or that's not, that's not what that is.
We don't do that either.
You do now, well, after the vote.
At this point, I think the only thing I can do is, instead of instructing the city manager to have the city manager and city clerk and city attorney determine the best appropriate charter officer to create this position.
All right, so what, what do you want me to do with your motion? Do you want me to take it back?
I don't know, City Clerk, since you're a parliamentarian, I initially said city manager. If I change it to charter officers to work with HR to create this potential research archivist position and job description for fiscal year '24, '25.
So do we have?
Yes, you still have a second.
We have a second on that, okay. All right, and I'm not repeating that. Are we good to vote on that?
I'm good.
Are we good? Okay, let's vote.
I'm sure we'll hear fireworks from some meeting hall as they're determining who's going to be in charge of this.
All right, we have a five zero, that's great, okay.
All right, I think I covered all of the discussion topics. You know, it's going to take time to get this reignited, and about the time that we get the advisory board started and applicants, we'll have this position hopefully approved during budget process, you know, and figure it out from there. But I don't know if anybody else has anything else. I'm motioned out, so in other words, take it over if anybody else has something.
Well, I think we covered the three main bases, is that right? Is that, do I have that correct? The three main things we were talking about and had to be addressed. We did address those, yes.
Okay, all right. First of all, your, your committee, you can only be on one board, okay? And now I'm on Parks and Rec, so I can't be on this new board, okay? And that would eliminate all the other people who are on other boards that might want to be on this board. So that's one thing to consider. The other thing, which is not part of all of this, I just hope we don't make the mistake with Wellen Park, who I hope is with us forever and ever. But here, we're just starting the history. Please collect all the history from there so we don't have to go back and find people, you know, because it's right here, it's right new, and let's start them off as part of us, at least right, and make them feel part of us. That's all.
Great point.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Anything else from the board up here? Are you okay? City Clerk, any public comment?
There is none.
All right, so if there's nothing else, I adjourn this meeting at 3:53.
Seven minutes, I'll see you out here in the next...
In a state of emergency, you are able to refill your prescriptions ahead of time, even if they're not due yet, so it's important to do that. Also, in your go-bags, you should have non-perishable food, flashlight, batteries, a radio that is battery-powered, and extra batteries. Should all power go out, we will be able to broadcast on 97.5 FM anything, any emergency information, so be sure to have your battery-powered radio ready and tuned in to 97.5. I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator for the City of Northport, and I'm going to tell you the difference between flood zones and evacuation zones, or in Sarasota County, we call them evacuation levels. So flood zones were generated by FEMA, and they're used to determine the likelihood that you will flood, and they're used to determine if you need flood insurance, if you have a mortgage on your home. Now, the evacuation zones are based on storm surge data that comes from the National Hurricane Center, and they use topography as well as hurricane vulnerability for storm surge for the area, and we use those to determine who needs to evacuate during a storm. So it's important to understand that there is a difference. If you're interested in finding out what evacuation zone you are in, which we highly recommend you do, you can use your search engine of choice and type in Sarasota County Know Your Level, and that'll take you to the Sarasota County government website. Water in a swale that's kind of the ditch by your house is not flooding. Within a, after a storm event, water should be in that swale up to 72 hours after the storm. That allows the water to be filtered, to get the stuff that came off our roofs and off the road out of the water so that when it reaches the habitat, it no longer has those contaminants in it. It also provides an opportunity to slow down water so that the water doesn't go so fast that erodes the roadways or any other infrastructure. So when you see water in a swale, if it's only been, you know, up to 72 hours since the last rain, that is not flooding, that is doing its job.
Hello, my name is Devon Pulis. I'm the Aquatics Facilities Manager with the City of Northport, and today we're going to be talking with you guys about our free swim evaluation. It's important that we do do swim evaluations, so as kids are registering for swim programs, they get placed in the right class. What we're looking at when we're doing the swim evaluation is every swim level has what's called exit skill assessments. So what we do is we have your child get in the water, and we'll go through a series of different movements. Can you go under the water? Can you show us your front crawl? Can you show us back crawl? Can you show us elementary backstroke, different strokes within there? And what we're doing is we're trying to see where your child tests to before it becomes a challenge for them at that point. Once we assess that, then we'll let you know, and you can go ahead and sign your child up for that appropriate level there. It's important that we have these, so that way, when we're teaching a Level One, we don't have kids that should be potentially in a Level Two in a Level One class because they're not learning the appropriate skills that they need at that point in time. Right now, when we're in full summer operations, we ask that people come between eight and 10 to do the swim evaluations, just as you can hear the water splashing in the background, slides, and everything like that. But any day of the week that we're open, you can come in at any point in time and ask for a swim evaluation. We always have a certified swim instructor on site that can have your child take a swim assessment.
I am the Emergency Management Coordinator for the City of Northport, and I'm going to be talking about having an evacuation plan. It's important to have an evacuation plan ahead of time, and it's very important to write it down because that way you can have it somewhere present where everybody in your family can see it and keep it fresh in their minds. And you want to also share it with people in your family or your neighbors so that they know what your plans are ahead of time and how to get ahold of you or where to look for you after a disaster. For your evacuation plans, you should have multiple routes to get to the location you're planning to go to, just because traffic-wise, traffic on 75 might be gridlocked. There could be some very good backroads to get to where you're going that could get you there more quickly without being stuck in traffic. When you're making an evacuation plan, we usually tell you four different things. You should stay home if you are not in a zone that's being evacuated, and if your home is built to withstand the forecasted storm. If you can't stay home and you evacuate, your next option should be to go to a friend or family's home that is outside of the evacuation area and is structurally sound to withstand the storm. Third option would be go to a hotel. They're much more comfortable than our evacuation centers. Fourth option would be to go to one of our evacuation centers. Sarasota County has 12 evacuation centers. Those can be found on their website.
At the City of Northport, we are here to serve you, and there are many ways to connect with us. You will always find friendly faces when you come to City Hall. When you first walk in, you will see our Customer Care Center. The Care Center helps customers who call into the city to get answers they need in a timely fashion. Our Care Center has helped more than 10,000 customers last month alone. Next to the Call Center, you will find the self-service kiosk for code enforcement and building divisions. Using the QR code or by visiting our website, you can schedule your appointments with ease. Have you checked out our website? From employment opportunities to building codes, you can find just about anything using the search bar. Finally, you can download the North Report app and submit non-emergency issues to City Hall in less than a minute. The app has helped correct more than 12,000 issues across the city. No matter the method you choose, the city is here for you, and together, we will build a stronger community.
Why do we flood? During significant rain events, Northport nearly always floods in certain areas of the city. This is thanks to the locally named Mayacahachi Creek, also known as the Big Slough watershed. The 195-square-mile drainage area flows through DeSoto, Manatee, and Sarasota Counties, then through our city to exit at Charlotte Harbor. As the City of Northport is located at the low end of the Big Slough watershed drainage system, the city's current flooding and water quality conditions are attributed not only to the state's drought, but also to upstream runoff in the DeSoto, Manatee, and Sarasota County portions of the Big Slough.
Today is Thursday, January 4, 2024. It is four a.m. We're in the City Chambers, and I call the City Commission, I'll go really slow, regular meeting to order. Roll call, Commissioners President or Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner Langdon, Vice Mayor, myself, Mayor White, and Commissioner Emmerich. There is a quorum for this meeting. We have City Manager Fletcher, City Attorney Slaton, City Clerk Faust. Do we still have, oh, I see Fire Chief Titus.
He's there.
Oh, I'm sorry. You moved. Police Chief Garrison. All right, and we're going to have the pledge, so Chief, since you're standing there, you can lead us in the pledge.
That'll teach us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, I'm looking for a second. I have a motion by Commissioner Emmerich to approve the agenda and seconded by, was that Commissioner McDowell?
I vote yes.
Okay, so let's...
It was a tie.
Yeah, I think it was a tie. All right, so let's vote on that. And that passes five to zero. Public comment?
There is none.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to proclamations and recognitions, so I'm going to invite my fellow commissioners to leave the dais and meet me downstairs. Downtown. No, there they are.
You might want...
I know.
do you want to come up?
Yeah, I was just looking at this. Probably a good idea.
Mom, Phil, we'll tag team. There you go. Do we have a Miss Donna Suggs in the audience? Please.
And Michelle.
And Michelle. Can y'all please come up here for a moment? Come on, Mom.
Well, you know, there's a rope, so... All right, I'm in the building department. This is too complicated for me. Thank you very much.
These are the bestest ladies in the whole wide world when it comes to holidays. I have a certificate here of appreciation that's hereby presented to Donna Suggs in recognition of the countless hours they have dedicated to turn City Hall into a holiday wonderland for 2023, presented this fourth day of January 2024, from the commission to y'all. Thank y'all so very, very much. You have two good shows. She said Mom wants to speak.
No, I don't.
No?
I mess it up every time.
I was told to keep it brief by my mother. She knows what happens when I get a microphone. We would just like to thank the commission, the City Manager's office, maintenance, fire department, and all of those who helped us out to make everything work this year. So thank you so much to everyone. It was truly a team effort.
I apologize for the cameras, you know that.
Thank you. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
There's no rules.
All right. Thanks so much.
I don't know what they are.
That's all, ladies.
Is there anyone here to accept this proclamation from Human Resources or Health? It's for Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist Week? There we go. Come on down, Julie. Let me start then.
Commissioner?
Yes.
It's supposed to be presented to Lindsey Bell. Is Lindsey Bell here? No? Okay, just checking.
Okay, I'm going to read it. We are as Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist, CRNAS, easy for me to say, are advanced practice registered nurses providing anesthesia care to patients in the United States for more than 150 years. CRNAS are among the nation's most trusted profession, and whereas legislation passed by Congress in 1986 made nurse anesthetists, anesthesiologists, the first nursing specialty to be accorded directory reimbursement rights by Medicare, and whereas CRNAS are the primary anesthesia providers in rural communities and continue to be the primary providers of anesthesia care to the U.S. military personnel, and whereas CRNAS practice in every setting in which anesthesia is delivered, from traditional hospital surgical suites to obstetrical delivery rooms to critical access hospitals, from ambulatory surgical centers to the offices of dentists, podiatrists, ophthalmologists, pain management specialists, and more, and whereas CRNAS are qualified to make independent judgments regarding all aspects of anesthesia care based on their education, training, and licensure, and whereas CRNAS are trusted anesthesia experts, caring for patients safely and compassionately, delivering specialized, cost-effective care to all patients, from newborns to seniors, for every type of procedure in all types of facilities, and whereas CRNAS' experience in critical care nursing, in addition to anesthesia care, provides the training and education to address unique healthcare challenges in some of our sickest patients, including veterans. And now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim January 21 through January 27, 2024, as National Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist And witness hereof, we have here to set our hands and the seal of Northport, Florida, to be affixed this fourth day of January 2024. Let's see if she got it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I think we should have a proclamation for Commissioner Langdon for saying that word over and over, and all the variations of anesthesia. Oh, my word. That is a mouthful. Okay. City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yeah.
All right, so if there's nothing further, it's 4:11, and I adjourn this meeting.